To talk, to talk. So instead of me it's gonna be the student. That's why I put them on. And then just to pick...
It's six o'clock, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, it's time for the meeting of the Walker County Board of Education to begin. Okay. It's it's time for it's time for our meeting to begin and I think Mr. Wilson is gonna do our invocation for us.
Father, we're so thankful for this day and the beauty of it. We're thankful, Lord, for this time that we can come together and we're thankful, Lord, for all of the support that is here tonight. Father, we just pray that as a board you would lead us and guide us and direct us to always make the right decisions for our students. And, Lord, we thank you so much for our leadership all throughout the school system. And we just ask now that you would forgive us where we have failed you. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
And I think Ms. Harden's gonna do our pledges for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
Thank you all for being here. Um, I think we have some special recognitions tonight, Mr. Raines.
We do, so we, I'm not sure what these folks are doing here, but we've got lots going on tonight. So, this is CTAE month across the state of Georgia and so we try to do this in a way that is a little more convenient for you guys. So, we do the North End Schools at Planning. Saves you from having to drive all the way to Plankton to the Bay. And then we do the South End Schools at Fort Vane next week before they will take the South End School. So, we're excited that you're here. Thank you for trusting us with your student, but also trusting you with these advisors and the CTSO directors as they guide their children and offer them opportunities. And we're just so proud of all that they accomplished, but we know the future is bright for them as well. So, Justin Carruth is our Director of CTAE at the high school level. And so, I'm gonna turn the program over to him. I think what we're gonna do is we recognize, we're gonna have you come up and stand in front of the board. He's gonna highlight some things that you guys have accomplished. Then we're gonna get a picture, then you'll sit down and we'll just go back and forth, okay? So, thank you, parents especially, and friends for coming tonight and joining us. And especially we thank our students for being here and what you're accomplishing. So, Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
And I'll echo what Mr. Raines said, especially tonight being Valentine night. Thank you very much for being here. I think we may even have some students that aren't here due to other extracurriculars or parents going on dates and the siblings having to watch younger siblings and so on and so forth. So, thank you very much for being here. Um, the first group I wanna recognize is from Ridgeland High School, FCCLA. The advisor is Ms. Beth Philkington. The students that are with her are Emily Greer and she is the president, Miranda Greer, VP of Competitive Events, Kaitlin Johnson, VP of Resource Management. Some of the things that they've accomplished this year is her officers attended Discover Training where they learned leadership skills to lead our local chapter. They attended Fall Rally at the Georgia National Fair where they won first place for the chapter fair booth. And Miranda Greer won second place in the peanut recipe contest. They attended Fall Leadership Conference where Emily Greer won her statesman award for FCCLA knowledge this past weekend, which was very good, Mr. Raines and my help for their judging and it was a phenomenal event.
A week late.
Yeah, that's right. And three of our students three of our students are advancing to state as a result of those star. Uh, Miranda Greer will compete in career investigation. Madison Arant will compete in teach and train. Summer Bearden will compete in job interview. And then other students will also will be competing in at the state event also. So, this is FCCLA from Ridgeland High School.
I'm standing back, I'll just peek over. Uh, well, I'm trying to make sure I can read everybody. Okay. Yeah, back of your head. Okay, y'all gonna count to three? One, two, three. Get one more. One, two, three. Heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next group we have is from Ridgeland High School, FFA. And the advisors are Mr. Pete Davis and Mrs. Kada Parrish. Y'all wanna go ahead and come up? And I will tell you, they had the largest number of students signed up to come, but there are, like I said
They're exhausted.
But some of the highlights of some of the students that were signed up to come is Maya Bible. She was nominated to Governor's Honors and earned a proficiency in agriculture education. Reese Waits, she's the treasurer and earned a proficiency in equine science. Uh, Isaac Shaw came in fourth at state for lawn mower operations. Connor White was also a Governor's Honors nominee. Monica Walker, she earned a proficiency in outdoor recreation. And she was also the National Horatio Alger Scholarship winner at $25,000. Um, Kevin Schmelzer, he earned a proficiency in ag mechanics repair and maintenance entrepreneurship. They had an enrollment of 163 FFA members in the first semester. They've competed in 14 different career development events and leadership development events, multiple community service projects. Uh, Tori Elliott, who's a graduate of Ridgeland High School who is now student teaching at La Spette High School, earned her American degree this year through FFA. Um, they've logged a bunch of hours. All of our teachers have logged a bunch of hours outside of the normal school day. And so, that's certainly something that goes a long way towards investing in your children and our students in Walker County schools. So, thank you to y'all and thank you to everyone else putting in all those extra hours. So, the next luxury that we have is to recognize some of our middle school CTSOs. And so, I think Ms. Walters from Rossell Middle even mentioned this is our first year getting to be recognized as a middle school chapter. So, um, I'm glad y'all could be here tonight. And so, the first one we will recognize is Rossell Middle School, FFA. The advisor is Ms. Tiffany Walters. The student she has with her is Ellie Young, Danny Royal. I'm sorry, I'm gonna mess up the name. Kiernan, is that right? I got it right. Kiernan Hicks, Jordan Chapman, Rayla Redden, Kaylee Burnett, and Aubrey Fliegel. Some of the things that they've accomplished this year is that members have participated in Region Rally Leadership Camp. They've completed multiple career development events, conducted several community service projects like collecting items for flood victims and items for the animal shelter, planned an eventful FFA Week celebration at the school, which is next week. And on Thursday of this week, her and Ms. Young from Channing Valley Middle will be at Rossell Elementary doing an Ag Commodities Day Taste of Walker County. So, that'll be an exciting event as well. So, Rossell Middle School.
You go, ladies. Okay. Okay, one, two, three, and get one more. One, two, three.
Next, we have Channing Valley Middle School, FFA, and the advisor is Ms. Cindy Young. And she also had several students signed up tonight, but again, they're probably babysitting or had other responsibilities that they had to do. She does have Ms. Autumn Gibson with her and she is the secretary for FFA. And you'll notice a thing, this first highlight is they've participated in multiple career development events. And when you focus on those words, career development events, they're preparing students for life after high school, right? Career development event, that's what it's all about, is to be sure that they are prepared. So, they've done that. They've had students who have shown livestock this year and they've been involved with multiple community service outreach activities. So, Channing Valley Middle School.
Okay, right here on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
And last but not least, Channing Valley Middle School, TSA, and the advisor is Mr. Steve Wells. And so, he brought with him Abby Faust, Graham DeWitt, Oliver Kennedy, Besta McMichael, Jessica Pickett, and Ava Ho. And Mr. Wells reached out to me and he said, instead of you providing our highlights, can my students provide our highlights? And I said, absolutely. So, I'm gonna let the students speak on behalf of Channing Valley Middle School TSA.
Hello, my name is Besta McMichael. I'm in seventh grade and have been in TSA for two years now. Let me introduce you to the other kids in the room. This is Abby Faust, Ava Ho, Jessica Pickett, um, Oliver Kennedy. I do not know your last name, child. And then I, I know him, but I don't know what I'm saying. Our major focus each year is to prepare ourselves for our state competition and our national conference in the summer.
Hi, I'm Abby Faust. This is my third year in our TSA program. And you may be wondering, what is TSA? TSA stands for Technology Student Association. We are a national student organization in middle and high schools around the country and the world. We are the only national student organization whose primary focus is to introduce students to engineering careers.
Hi, I'm Ava Ho and I'm in seventh grade. Um, last year, our team was successful in many of the competitions that we entered. At the state conference in Athens last March, we placed first in CAD, Computer-Aided Design, CO2 Dragster, Leadership Challenge, Problem Solving, and Technology Debate. We also placed third in children's stories, digital photography, and bester bonds. We placed fourth in mass production and in technical design. We entered 12 events and placed in the top three in eight of these events. We are the sixth best medical chapter in the world. We entered twelve events and placed in the top three in eight of these events. We are the sixth best medical chapter in Georgia.
Hi, my name is Jessica. I'm in seventh grade, and every year we take a field trip to the US Space and Rocket Center in Hester Valley. This year, we took forty students. The US Space and Rocket Center is adjacent to the Marshall Space and Flight Center located in West Coast. It is the birthplace of our space program, the best space. It has a building dedicated to the Saturn five rocket and the Apollo space program. It also has outdoor rides, like the space shots, and studios that you can also see.
My name is Oliver Kennedy. I'm in seventh grade and I've been in TSA for two years. One of our field trips we did this fall is going to the Higher G Manufacturing Center. Um, in Lafayette, we met many of the engineers, and we got to learn how they were making, how they make a manufacturer's oven. Um, we got to make boxes for type A's and test them, tested in the large industrial manufacturer pressure.
Thank you for allowing...My name is Graham DeWitt, and I'm a sixth grader. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and speak about our program. Thank you as well for your continued support about career technology in agriculture education for CTA and the Technology Student Association. We hope you will continue to support all we do in the future as we promote engineering careers.
Okay, now I can say hi. All right. Right here on three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Stay where you're at. We've got lots of parents taking...
Thank you very much. I asked Mr. Wells while they were speaking, "Are these all eighth graders? Are they seventh and eighth graders?" There was one eighth grader up there, and the rest were sixth and seventh graders. So, for them to be able to speak like that, I think that shows kudos to the development that Mr. Wells is doing and all the teachers he wants to contribute to.